I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to our town meeting for June the 6th, 2018. Before we begin... Oh, I don't have my calendar. The meeting is called to order. Before we begin, we'll take a few moments for a moment of silence. Thank you. The council would review the agenda. And if there are no additions or subtractions... There was something taken out of the agenda. But I guess it wasn't put in there from our work session, huh? What we discussed during the work session. Those items. So is there... If there's a motion to accept the agenda... I'll take a motion to accept the agenda.
I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We move forward with the tonight's meeting. We do have a guest here today. You don't have a comment? Do you have a comment? Anything? You can just state who you are.
Sure, sure.
Sure you can. That'd be great. Always glad to have a guest here.
Yes, my name is Michael Thies. I'm a journalist with the recently launched news website called WordOneReporter.com.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Journalists typically do this.
Thank you so much for coming. Did you... What's your name?
Michael.
Michael.
How do you spell your last name?
T-H-E-I-S.
T-H-E-I-S. Thank you. Thanks for coming. The next item under all business is the final approval of ordinance 2018-OR-01, amending the final... Amending FY1718 annual budget. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2018-OR-01. We amended the budget.
This is from the...
FY1718.
We adopted like a preliminary version of this?
The adjustments from 1718.
Right. I understand that. I meant that this is... We made a sort of preliminary approval at the last council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Our last council. Is there a motion?
Do we have...
From what's the bills? What happens is when bills that come in, we can only kind of guesstimate.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have a copy, though, of the...
Oh, I was gonna ask the same thing.
Yeah.
Um...
Of the final...
You can't have a copy of everything because everything doesn't come in until the end.
No, no, no. I meant of the... Of the final budget amendment that we are looking at. It would still be like a spreadsheet, right?
He gave that on the last meeting as much as he possibly could. Yeah, and he hasn't been here to make the changes. Yeah, he can't give you anything else.
So it's kind of hard to... Excuse me.
To prove it.
Move forward with this without the county minister to hear it, right?
Well, we sort of... It's always difficult in June because everything doesn't come in.
No, but...
Until the end.
Right. But what I'm saying is without his presence...
Without those...
It's kind of hard for something to be explained or whatever.
Or without a copy of it.
Because he's not here to...
Was there...
Go ahead.
Was there an actual ordinance format put to it or is it just a spreadsheet?
It's really just a spreadsheet showing...
No. I think he had an actual ordinance too. I know he did one not for this one, but for the one before.
Last month.
Yeah. But I thought we did have an actual ordinance for it. I'm trying to remember.
So last month he did? He did, and he said he needed to amend it to make the adjustments. But he hasn't been here to make the adjustments to the ordinance, so...
Right, okay.
So do we need to table this?
So I make a motion that we table it. Can I do that?
Because that'll be July.
It will be July.
We can't...
Um...
We can... We can make the motion with...
A contingency that...
Yeah, sort of tentative or...
Well, we can have a special meeting in June.
You could do that.
Another meeting. That's what I think we should do.
I don't think it's better to do it within the fiscal year, but I don't think you have to. They don't close out the books for a while yet, actually.
I remember having to say that.
And you really do need to have the thing in writing, how it's going to be adopted.
We have that in writing. It's just the actual numbers.
Well, normally what would happen is you would give enough leeway so that whatever was coming in, you would fit into it. So if you were expecting $30 to come in, you'd put in 40 and then it'd be okay.
He did the projected.
Yeah, he did the projected. Well, the projected is fine. So long as you don't have... Even if you don't have the final finals, it's always a predictive document until the fiscal year is over and everything's in.
And that's what he provided last month.
Yeah.
It was the projected.
All right. Then you don't... If that's what you're asking about, do you have to get to the final final numbers as to what actually came in? No, you don't. Just so long as you're... You're a little bit beyond it, that's fine. Because then you just don't spend all of it.
Right.
Okay. I'm just confused about what we're voting on then, if we don't have the ordinance.
Whenever you do a budget in the... Like, that's effective July 1 of a given fiscal year, it's always a predictive document because you don't know how much is going to come in or how much is going to go out. And so some jurisdictions do it each time something happens when they're moving something between major categories.
Right.
Some of them wait until closer to the end of the fiscal year. But to make changes in the ordinance, you have to do another ordinance. That's the issue. And you should clean it up that way, at least at the end, so that it's clear that you've had a full formal vote on how the monies were going to be spent. It's kind of odd to have a budget in an ordinance.
So do we have a copy of what he gave us the last time? Because I honestly... I have to be honest. I don't remember it. I don't remember seeing it. Do you remember seeing it?
Probably in your...
I do remember seeing...
You know.
It would have been in the last packet, right?
Yeah.
In your email packet.
Yeah. It's, um...
Let's take a look. I don't know if I can print that.
Because normally he sends it by email, like the entire thing of whatever he's putting on the agenda.
Yeah. When he sent it, excuse me, by email, he also gives the hard copy too.
Right. And I know I didn't... I didn't get it by email, so it wasn't a hard copy. Because I always tell him, "My stupid printer doesn't want to act right," so I don't know.
I mean, I just don't have... I'm not seeing it on our... In the stuff that Rod sent to us from before, the 2017-2018 amendments.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I see the 2018-2019. I feel like would be good to go for adopting the new fiscal year annual budget. But this one...
He gave us the hard copy last month.
Okay.
I can't go with this. I don't know where he keeps it. Shantae probably did. We can skip that until...
Here it is. I have it. It was 2018-OR-01, right? To amend the fiscal year budget for fiscal year 2017.
Right.
Uh-huh. I have it. And it shows the changes in two columns.
Yep.
Okay.
That was the one. Can you... So can you email that to me? At least me and Mr. Johnson can just have it in front of us, so we'll...
Or email it to me. I'll be more than happy to go print it out. Oh, that was easiest.
You know, it went to everybody on May 7 at 3:32 PM.
All right. In the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
It starts on... Let's see. I can't see what page it's on. It's a little ways in. 22... Probably 20, maybe?
Yep.
Page 20.
I got it. All right.
This is agenda item 6E.
Yeah, and then 6C.
Not 6E, it was 6... No, it wasn't 6E.
Rejection.
Before that.
Okay.
6D, I think.
I feel far more comfortable now voting on this, having to say...
That was fine. I mean, because that's from my junk drawer.
Yeah. No, we definitely discussed it and...
I remember it. I just didn't remember seeing the... Seeing it.
So he emailed it and provided a hard copy of it.
We got it. Okay. Well, I move that we adopt the ordinance to amend the 2017-2018 budget.
Motion made and second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
FY1718 budget amendment has passed. The next item is the final approval of ordinance 2018-OR-02, adopting the fiscal year 1819 annual budget. Is there any discussion on that? If there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion for the final approval of ordinance 2018-OR-02, the fiscal year 1819 annual budget.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. There's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. We have a budget approved. Thank you. The next item would be the resolution to renew the town's general obligation for the bonds with TD Bank.
Okay, if we could... Actually, what we're really asking you to do at this point is to authorize the town to ask for the continuance of the bond. We have spoken with the bank representative who had to get back to their lawyers. This was done back in 2014, and there were a number of documents that were required to be processed. And you had to know what the new interest rate was going to be, and there had to be a resolution that the council would adopt to approve that, the amendment of the original bond. So what they've asked you for... And none of that has been provided at this point. So what they're asking you to do is to go ahead and ask... This is the first step, which is to ask for a continuance of the bond.
Okay.
I thought it was automatic and it would be the same interest rate, so it's according to... All right.
And this is related to the bond that was for the... For Decatur Street? Okay.
Yeah.
So this motion would be for the continuance of the renewal... No. Yeah. Of the renewal of the town's general obligation of the bond with TD Bank.
It was... It's a kind of a complicated process, but they have various put dates where they can call it. What you're asking them to do is not call the bond and to instead continue with the bond. But then they have the right to look at the interest rate. So what you'll want to do when they give you the interest rate is to see whether or not you can get a better one elsewhere or if the cost of doing that would, you know, override the benefit of...
How much is the bond now? What is it?
I don't...
Do we know how much it is now?
Yeah, it's in the budget.
Like, what we owe on it?
Um...
I don't know what you're thinking.
Let me go back to that. Here. It's under capital, right?
Too heavy.
Yeah. So it'll be paid off in July of 2028. And presently...
So where right now, where it's...
Where are we now? We're like, say, March?
March 2018. October is about to be...
Yeah, I mean, it's tough because we owe... Like, we'll continue to have to pay interest on it.
Yeah. So it's like $46,870.
So do we know what the interest rate is, Swellin', or we don't have to?
They have not provided that yet. I have asked for that. My impression in talking to this gentleman is that this is not his normal line of work.
No.
This has landed on his desk kind of thing.
Okay.
You know? And I sent him copies of some of the things that we had done last time around when this bond had to be continued. And he said he would get to their attorneys and then get back to you, so...
We could be getting a really spotty rate here.
Well, so we pay $46,000 a year, and with each one of those payments... The better way to look at it is every six months, we pay $23,000. Seventeen grand of that is principal, six grand of that is interest. And then by the close, after this is all paid off, we'll have paid $551,000 to principal and $108,000 to interest.
Okay. Well, what's the interest rate on it now? Do we even know what that is?
I don't... I can tell you that when I look it up.
Oh, okay.
I think I can tell you that.
I know. It's like my student loans. I never... You know? I just pay it. I have no idea what's happening.
You pay just get it off the money.
Yeah.
It's low. I mean, that's one of the reasons you did it.
Every three months, I can make a nice note saying your interest rates changed.
And the interest rates were still pretty low.
Yeah.
So now it's a time, you know, it's okay.
It changes in one direction.
You're right.
Well, can we go ahead and move forward with the vote on at least continuing the bond?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion is on.
All right, a second.
The motion is on.
Meaning I need to move... I thought that... Okay. I moved that we adopt a resolution to renew the bond with TD Banks.
Yeah, a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. So as we move on to new business, SEED. SEED provided us a proposal for their summer bridge program, which everyone has in their packet, and hopefully reviewed it for the summer, for summer camp. So it's up to us whether we'd like to provide a summer camp for our residents at the cost of $6,000 to the town.
Didn't we go into that? Wasn't there a grant for $6,000 before at the summer camp, and then somehow it got blown out of proportion?
This isn't a grant. This is going to be actual cash.
What's our budget for the... Do we have a budget for the grant, right? I mean, a budget for the camp. We have a budget for the camp? Will we have the $6,000? No. We don't know.
It's not budgeted.
Okay.
I'm just presenting this to the council because we had her to come here and present to the council. And I think we asked her to present a proposal, and this is what she has done. And this is the program. So it's up to us to decide whether we'd like to do it or not.
Well, on the... I mean, we do have extra... We are anticipating having extra cash from this budget year. Right?
Not necessarily so.
Okay. Well, let me just look at the document again.
Is this something that we are interested in doing? The camp?
Well, I just want to address Ms. Bennett White's budget concern. Because if we can put the budget concern off the table, right, then we can have a discussion.
Okay. Well, yeah. I just kind of want to know.
But is this something that we're interested in, though? A budget wouldn't even be an issue if it's not even something we want to do.
I mean, I'm certainly interested in supporting it for our residents, particularly since we're not going to have... You know, we're not going to have an environmental camp again, so...
So, but SEED will be running the camp, right?
Yeah.
Well, apparently, we'd be paying the salaries. We'd be paying the SEED staff. Yeah. They would be the ones running the camp.
They'd be the ones running the camp, and we will be paying them?
Yeah. We'd pay them to support... But there would be as... Well, Mr. Johnson, there would be Edmiston residents who would be a part of it. So we'd be able to support the Edmiston residents' participation.
Well, myself personally, I'm not for it.
So in the back, it's books, materials, salaries, $1,200. Staff salaries, $4,800. Total cost for us, $6,000. So is there a motion to accept the proposal for SEED's summer bridge program?
I make a motion that we table this until... I would like to do some more research on it, only because I am familiar with the SEED summer bridge program that we had at our school. And I really wasn't pleased with it. I guess that's the way I can put it. Because I'm not sure how it... How it enriched our students. So I'd like to do some more research on this one. So if we can table it, how much time does she need before we have to come to her and say...
So you're saying you were not pleased with the program?
Yes.
So letting this motion die... It was on the agenda. She presented the proposal, so we're not accepting this proposal.
Okay.
So you can let it die. You don't have to table it.
Okay.
We can bring... If she has something else, we can bring something else back.
Okay.
So let me put it back. Is there a motion to accept the SEED summer bridge program proposal?
I mean, I... No, I mean, I'd like to move that we accept the proposal.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I can't say.
Motion died for lack of a second. So Ms. White, for whomever, you can do just a little more research and maybe she can present something different.
Yeah. Because I wasn't pleased with their nutrition program that I was in through SEED.
So if it's something we're not pleased with, it's something...
It's something that needed to be more further investigated.
Okay. Maybe there's another program out there that we can find for our youth.
Yeah. I mean, because there's always better.
The next item is a motion to accept the minutes from the May 16 Town Regular Session and May 16 Town Council Work Session. Is there a motion to approve, to accept?
I make a motion to approve, to accept, work session and Town Council and regular minutes from May 16.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Yeah, a second.
Thank you, Johnson. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. The next item would be a discussion of Peace Cross legal status. Ms. Ferguson has an update. She thought that we might be interested in this information. Ms. Ferguson?
The Peace Cross case, the... One of the parties is Park and Planning Commission, which owns the Peace Cross. And they are appealing the decision of the court, which is the Fourth Circuit, that this was a religious symbol and that maintaining it would be an establishment of religion type of activity.
Oh, Lord.
So they're trying to... They're trying to request cert to the Supreme Court. And they have... I got a call from Park and Planings and... And they have, I got a call from Park and Planning's attorney who inquired as to whether any of the port towns, in particular Bladensburg, but if any of the port towns were interested in possibly participating in a friend of the court type of action. Okay. And they would try to arrange it in a way that the, there would be no cost to the municipalities for doing that. So, um, that's what this is on the agenda for, to find out if you are interested in participating. Or at least giving an initial indication that you're interested in participating in a friend of the court brief to the Supreme Court. So I'm just passing on the request.
Counsel? What's the timing for a decision? Right, because usually
I think they'd like to hear sooner than later. Uh, I know Bladensburg has already voted to authorize proceeding on this, but, you know, it's in, it's closer to them, because it's in their town.
Right.
So, and they have been in support of keeping it all along. So, it's, it's not something that there's a lot of pressure being brought to bear on you to do that. It's just you're, you're being asked if you would be interested in doing that. Because I don't, I don't recall you taking a position one way or the other on this previously. I know Bladensburg did. They took a very strong position in supporting keeping the Peace Cross where it is.
Yeah, I'm all for saving it in, you know, any way you can, you know, because that's a monument that's been there forever and then all of a sudden you just want to uproot and get rid of it, that's, that doesn't make any sense. Any way of saving it, I'm all for it myself.
Ms. White?
Um, I agree with Mr. Johnson, I think, and initially the reason for them wanting to, um, take it down was because they felt that it represented, um,
A religious symbol.
Yeah, that's
That's being supported by the government, yes.
Okay.
Because it has a cross at the top.
Okay, because I, to be honest, I never looked at it that way. I mean, you know, for me, it simply, um, symbolized the veterans. Because that was, that was what I thought was initially there for.
It is.
So I never looked at it any other way, other than, I bet maybe I'm not religious enough. Maybe that's the problem. But no, I'm, I'm, no, I'm all for not taking it down.
I, I think that's actually the argument that's been made so far, that, you know, with the wording at the bottom, honor of valor and courage.
That's what I always thought.
And the purpose for it originally was as a memorial for, uh, the soldiers who died.
Soldiers, right, okay, so, yes. I'm, I'm
I, I'd just like to raise that, it sounds like, I mean, I fully respect your positions. And I personally don't have a problem with the Peace Cross. But I do, as sort of an elected official representing a town for which there are a number of faiths and maybe people have differing views about what that Peace Cross means, that we as a town should maybe be exceedingly cautious in agreeing to sign on to a brief that could send a signal to our residents or other people outside of our community that we have a certain perspective about faith. And I know that's not what, it's about, it's about perception. And I would just be very careful about that. I also think that we don't know very much about the case, you know, none of, as far as them. No, none of us are like First Amendment experts and I have no idea what the brief for the, for Maryland Parks and Planning looks like. And I, I just, I would be uncomfortable with us joining an amicus in this case.
I don't, and you've asked about the timing. I'm not sure what the timing is. I know the Bladensburg position is to continue to explore it. Okay, because obviously you would not, the town's message belongs to the town. And so you would not want to go forward and give up control of what your message is. So, um, that's what they've done so far, is to continue to go forward and explore it. To make sure that the terms of that are acceptable to them.
So, because they're not a party to the suit, right?
No, it's a friend, it's a friend of the court.
Okay, they're just coming in as an amicus. So maybe the thing to do would be for us to just, if they're going to do this, for us to look at their brief before we make a decision. For us to read their brief.
Okay.
Because if they're going to file an amicus anyway.
Whatever you're comfortable with is what I will go back to Park and Planning with. I, I believe that the county has now signed on, I think I saw that in the paper the other day.
Really?
Yeah. But that's a, that's a very reasonable position to take because you don't want to sign on to something that you haven't seen, at least the outline of what's going to be said. But if you're interested in pursuing it to a certain extent, then I can tell them that. Or if you'd just rather not and just back up and
No, I'd like to see the brief. Honestly, so.
And this goes back, what, two, three, three years now, right?
It's quite a while, well, you know, to get, first it went to a US District Court in Maryland and then went up to the Fourth Circuit. And now they're seeking it to be taken up to the Supreme Court. So this is just what they're filing to see if the Supreme Court will take it or not. Because it's always up to the Supreme Court as to whether they're going to take a case.
And the idea is that if you file friend of the court briefs while you're trying to get the Supreme Court to grant review, that there might be a better chance. But the Supreme Court doesn't have to take this case, only, it only takes about, like, less than 1% of the requests for it to review cases, so it's kind of a hail mary pass, I think, for lack of a better term, considering that we're talking about the Peace Cross, but, um.
I, I would think that taking a position is not taking a, um, a religious position. I don't think it would be sending out a religious message at all to our constituents at all.
I agree with Tracy.
One way or the other. I think it would be one thing, supporting a sister community and supporting a monument that has been in the community. Now, those who want to tear it down has made it a religious issue.
And that's how this ball came about from the beginning?
Yes.
Yeah, I think supporting, keeping it here has nothing to do with religion. And I don't think that it would send a religious message at all. I think it would show support and wanting, um, something that has been in the community for years to stay. And it would tear the hearts of the family members who lost their sons, husbands, maybe daughters. And that's their dedication for someone to rip that down or alter it. That's the, that's the thing. And that's what I would be supporting.
Well, then let's see the brief.
Yeah, and I agree. I agree seeing it, but
All right, so what I would be able to tell them is that you would be, you're interested in keeping and discuss, in keeping the monument. But don't, don't feel comfortable just signing on to, um, a brief at this point without knowing a little bit more what it's going to say. And if it has your message in it, then, you know, you would be accepting of it. You just need to know it's got your message and how you want to say it.
We're in support, but we'd like to know what it says.
That's all I'll tell them.
Super, thank you for bringing that to us.
Um, it could cause all that issue.
Yeah.
Can I suggest that we also, um, continue to put this on our town council agendas?
I thought you were going to say on our prayer list, but no.
Just because I think it's, it's important for us to have the, like, to the extent that we can get any of our community members to give us some feedback on their views on this, I think that that's important.
Well, I was going to say, because if we're representing the residents, then we need to know how they feel also.
Yeah, I apologize, um, this is moving fairly fast. Because of the filing deadlines and those kinds of things, so.
Right, we could put this in our newsletter for information, maybe.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. And we're not make or break, I mean, they're going to be filing this amicus brief anyway, so.
Yes, ma'am.
We could also add it, um, like, to something that we hand out Edmiston Day as survey.
That's a good idea, yeah.
And give me something, I'll put it on our Facebook page for the department, too.
Okay.
Very good communication.
Yeah, Edmiston, that's right around the corner.
Literally.
All right, as we move on. Police report, that was a good lead in.
I practiced all day. Based on a semi-slow month, it's getting warmer, so things get a little bit more active. First, Officer Torres is due to be released for solo patrol June 15th. I got her working mainly day work, um, so I'll be around some of the time. And then I also have Corporal Young coming in a little early, so they have a chance to talk and work out any bumps they find in the road. For the police report, for the stats, assist citizens were four, assist outside agencies, excuse me, other units was six. That was probably Torres and Young backing each other. Assisting outside agencies was nine. Check on welfare is four. Disorderly subjects, which could mean customer disputes or just disorderlies in general, is 13, because the county classifies them all differently. Domestic disputes or standbys was two. We had four fights in progress, three loud music, like I said, the weather's getting a little warm, except for the rain. Missing person, one. Attempts or threats of suicides, two. Suspicious subjects, one. Suspicious vehicles, unoccupied, three. Occupied, two. Deaf from autos, three. Hit and runs, two. Traffic complaints, one. Unknown troubles, one. Thefts, two. Holdup or panic alarms, two. Notifications, one. Assaults, two. One was on an officer. Other things, including traffic stops, 43. That was a slight change this month because we didn't have traffic stops listed. Stop sign violation states, let me try this, state citation types, stop sign four. Registration violation, three. Driver's license violations, two. Cell phone or texting, one. Speeding, one. All others, five. Warning citation types, five stop signs, one seatbelt, two registration violations, four cellphone texting, one speeding, three others, one safety repair order, and 30 parking tickets. We're, as ready as we're going to be, I believe, for Edmonds today, there's going to be some no parking signs put out probably tomorrow, weather permits. It's going to be from 1:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the 9th, along parade route, as well as signs saying what the parade route will be. So if weather holds out, that's the plans for Public Works and me to do. That's it for today.
On the loud music, where, where at in?
I don't have that listed in the numbers. And the map really isn't very accurate, so I don't
No, I was just wondering if it was like over in industrial area or
Last I heard, it was, I think we had one over there, I'm not sure about any other ones.
So I remember that one time, remember, the lady was complaining
I had
On Gallatin? About the music, but it was coming from Riverdale, actually coming from Riverdale.
Well, I, I know that, um,
That was one, it was the same.
It wasn't from Riverdale this time. I had two calls.
That was Gallatin or Hamilton?
Forty-Ninth.
Forty-Ninth, you called me about it, I said Torres and Young. We usually have one that's down here off Gallatin, I mean, excuse me, at Crittenen, at the dead end, it's pretty normal when it gets warm. We have one on Lafayette occasionally, when they get new equipment, and then the one, like, at 49th. And I think there's one on Gallatin, they're pretty regulars. Warm weather's getting here and it's going to be coming. And unfortunately, some people just don't like whatever particular music and they call and complain.
Yeah, well, what they need to do is, um, take them, one of their CDs and maybe things will work out.
Or invite them to the party.
Yeah, to the party, yeah.
Invite your neighbors to the party.
That always helps.
Don't exclude.
If you don't, you know, if you can't come, here's my number, give me a call.
Let them know that you're having a party.
Right, right.
And the shutdown time.
That's it.
Um, I also think that a lot of times the neighbors don't understand that if they don't call the police, then it's not, you don't know, so you can't do anything about it. Because a lot of times I get a call and they tell me, the police just drove right by and didn't say anything.
No complaint, no foul.
Right. Well, you won't say anything if nobody called you to necessarily say something, because it's okay, it's only 8 o'clock.
Right, well, and you can't disturb a police officer's peace and that's a problem. Um, one of the other problems we've had, now with the new system, it seems to have gotten better.
Did you say you can't disturb a police officer's peace, explain that?
You, I need a complaint.
He's right.
No, I was saying, explain that.
Oh, yeah, I can drive down the street and you could have music blasting so bad, it breaks my cruiser windows out, but I can't do it. I need a complaint, I need a citizen. And preferably one that wants to give me a name and address, like, if someone's under court, because a citizen's complaint's really sort of weak when you go to, before a judge. I need a citizen that's going to be interested in actually going to court and saying, yes, I called, they were disturbing my peace. That's the key. And sometimes that's harder to get. But as I was saying with the new system, we're lucky, our phones switched to the county dispatch. Before, we would get phone calls and, you know, I'd come in Monday or, and I'd get a phone call, yeah, there was a loud party Friday night. I can't do much about a party that happened Friday night on Monday morning. That's been sort of corrected with this new system, thank goodness, that helps a lot. But just like the people that have a tendency to issue emails to mayor and council or even me two or three days later, nothing I can do about that. I mean, I can go by and say, hey, listen, you know, we got a complaint, you might want to be so loud next time, but it's as far as you can really go. So they really need to call.
Call when it's happening.
Call
So how do we, how do we educate residents on that?
Good question, I've been trying for 31 years.
People really probably just don't know. You know, they just don't know.
Over the years, I've put the non-emergency number out for communications, PD Communications, I've put the 911 number out. When I've had my own dispatcher, I put that number out.
And you can also put a suggestion in the newsletter.
That's what I was
You know, be respectful to your neighbors or whatever.
Or saying, if you, if you, I want to hear something, say something or something like that.
You're definitely going to hear something if it's music.
But no, but I'm saying, if you don't say anything, it won't make it
Yeah, don't wait three days.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where I was going.
We can keep promoting that more and more. But like I said, I've been trying for 31 years and people just, for some reason, don't do it. A lot of it's, I'm guessing they don't want to get involved. You know, I don't want my neighbor mad at me and have something happen.
I'm here, yeah, yes.
Like, the other thing is, that's the first I knew about that. I mean, I thought, I mean, if you come by somebody's house
Exactly, that's my point. They don't know.
I didn't know that, I had to call and tell you.
Yes.
That's why I said, how do we, how do we educate residents about that?
I ride by and someone's in the yard and they happen to come talk to me, I'm like, you know, it's, it's a little loud, you might want to turn it down. But they tell me, well, you know, I really don't want to.
But I just took it for granted that if you heard it, you would say something, I didn't need to call someone.
Newsies are certain now.
We don't have the rights you guys have.
It's like Mr. Johnson said, written newsletter, let us let people know.
The Chantel will come up with something on her weekly
Her blast, I'll, I'll work on it and give it to you until you blast away. And I'll put it on our Facebook page and, and however else I can get it in the media and in town bulletin.
I heard a couple of neighbors said, hey, did you hear that loud music last night?
And they say I always hear, police officer came right by and didn't say anything.
But see, but also a lot of people are under the impression that they can play the music loud, they want up until a certain
Absolutely.
hour, you know, so, but I mean, I would think even if you're a police officer, and the thing is, just that loud, you know, regardless of my call or not, you know, the officer, hey, can you, you might want to tone that down a little bit, you know?
We, we can request, the problem is when these people decide to push our hand and they want us off of their property, they want to
Yeah, because most people are, you know, they're all liquored up and that's, that's when the music go up.
Yeah, and then they get
They can't hear.
More aggressive.
Right.
And then sort of like pushes our hand, why are we there, we really don't have the right to be there.
Right.
So, give me a complaint that's willing to step forward, we're good to go. More than happy to handle it.
So is it more so something that needs to, say, from like the code office or something like that? Maybe
Both, because we have a town code as well as state law.
Yeah, and then maybe we can just kind of educate in the residents on that. Did you know? Yeah, did you know sort of thing, right? And put the ordinance in there, yeah. And put the ordinance in there, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
Can we, and I have one other question. The gentleman that came to the last meeting and he had a question about the parking restrictions, I guess on Gallatin, what is it, Gallatin and Hamilton, is that where it was?
Oh, down that in the town, yeah, I, everybody's looking into it and trying to figure the details out.
Where's it going on?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't think it's going to be a fast fix.
Okay.
I know Chantay's been working with them and Rod.
Okay. I just wanted to know we were working on it, because I didn't want him to think that we, we had that meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it.
Yeah, okay. We're trying to figure out the best way to handle.
For everybody to go forward.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. So, Ms. Tucker-Bill, you had some information when we were going to go into council dialogue, when we were in the.
Oh, yes, I wanted to, um, I want to talk about, I want us to figure out what's happening with our residents when we have a deluge like we had over the weekend and a couple weeks ago. I sent you all pictures of what the Anacostia looked like. And I just, I just drove around that night and I know that so many of our residents are having trouble with water in their basements and, and I'm wondering if we can maybe get some like testimonials from folks about whether or not like these rain gardens on Crittenen Street are working for them and really is reducing the amount of water that they're seeing like coming into their homes and that kind of thing.
Did you get calls from residents?
No, I just drove around and I saw like an unbelievable amount of water.
No, but did you?
Standing.
And, but that was in the street?
No, but I've talked to Hillary and she said that a number of her neighbors are constantly dealing with water in their houses.
Because I was walking around and I was out.
I was down at the bridge.
And everything, yeah, I was at the levee, looking for, I saw a lot of people out, but I did not hear.
Everybody complained.
One complaint. And.
No, I'm hoping, I mean, I think to some degree, like it's, clearly the pumping station works, right? Like, I don't know, I mean, I'm particularly talking about the other side of Decatur Street, like this side of the river, the other side of Decatur Street.
On Crittenen?
Yeah, like Crittenen back there.
Down by the park and so forth.
So the issue over there by the plumbing, you know, where they had the plumbing issue, the plumber, the plumbing company at the corner, you know how the, that runoff?
Yeah.
That's a runoff issue, they're supposed to be dealing with that, that's environment.
State, yeah, state department.
Environment is supposed to be working on that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, can we check in to see what's happening with that or, I just, I mean, I had water in my basement, so.
How long, how long have you lived here? Um, how, over the?
In that, in that house?
Yeah, I mean, or in the town itself, old ago. I mean, this first time you dealing with this?
No, 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 but it's my first time on the town council.
No, I ain't talking about the council. I'm talking about the issue.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about the issue of water in the town itself.
Right, right, no, 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 this is, no, this is not the first time I'm dealing with this.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious, because I seen people in little boats going up and down here years ago.
Right, no, I mean, clearly it's a, no, I mean, I've talked to neighbors about it and they've said that, and like the building of the levee and the pumping stations been good, but I think there's still, I can imagine, if I've got water in my basement that other people do too.
Yeah.
And.
Those who don't have some pumps.
Spoken to Hillary, I have a some pump.
But I think everybody got some pump, you know, you can only pump out so much. And, and you can't control what that's, you know, what the river does, because this, that's the highest I've seen in a long time. I mean, it was like this far from, coming over the bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, you know, when it's an active, you know, active, I mean, active nature, you know, you, you just got to deal with it. I mean, pump the sta, pump the station can only do so much, and then if the water, and we haven't had this much rain in a long time. And, you know, and everything, you know, it just happens, you know.
Well, the reason I'm raising this is because I think there might be some things that we can do and trying to figure out, like where our rain gardens should be, like things that could help like absorb some of the storm water, because there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of pavement over there, particularly on that side of Decatur, so I'm just trying to, and I don't know if when.
They have a huge, they have a huge project. But you're right, I need to follow up with them to see when they're going to.
Isn't that what that project is? For the, the storm water, what she's talking about, the rain gardens and absorbing, that's, that's what the project that Rod is working on there is.
No.
Rain guards, rain guards only, it can only handle so much anyway, depending on how much it rains. You know, you're going, a rain guard is going to overflow too.
Well, depending on the rain, right.
And the main purpose is actually filtering out what's going down into the river.
Right, right.
See, that's what, that's, that's what that's for.
Yeah. I just, look, I'm, I am no.
Thank you.
Engineer, like I don't know what's going on, but I just, like, I, I think that, you know, I, I'm having water problems, some of my neighbors on Emerson Street are, and then I've talked to Hillary and she said that a number of her neighbors on Fifty-First Street and on Crittenen are.
And so were they having these problems before we had this, this massive rain?
Yeah.
That we've had for like.
Yeah, I talked to.
Were they having problems before then? Because if so, nobody's come to the council and said anything about it before. I just, I'm, I'm just wondering if this, if it just started out because of this huge rain that we have.
No, 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 it was before this, it was before this.
Okay, yeah, I, I would think they would come and say something.
I wonder why they, you know.
Okay, well, then, I mean, if you all don't think it's, I mean, the mayor and I can work on this, we can talk to folks and figure it out if, if it's not something.
Or they could come up with some testimonials.
If the council's interested in helping with.
And just kind of say, we've had this problem, blah, 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 blah. If they have it.
So you had another item?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, doing the sessions for the people in our community who might be leaving, who might be, whose temporary protected status might be ending. Hillary's very much so interested in doing that, and I was hoping Sophia would be here because I know she was really interested in moving forward with that, but I'd like, I'd like us to set a date for that.
Throw some dates out there, we need to go ahead and move forward.
Okay, so.
Or Hillary, I know she said that she had her, she got in touch with the professionals that were going to assist her, so maybe Hillary can come up with some dates or.
Okay, so is everyone comfortable with me doing that? Then I'll ask her when like her, their interpreters and legal experts are going to be available to be able to give people guidance and then we can work backwards from that.
Yeah, and I think the biggest question was where we were going to do it or something? Where it would be held?
I thought she was supposed to have.
I think that was one of the biggest, biggest issues was where, because they were concerned about people coming to the rec center or what.
They didn't want it to be here. At the rec center.
Rec center is probably okay.
Okay.
It's more room.
In the rec center, yeah, oh, absolutely. I know that it wouldn't be here, because they wouldn't feel comfortable.
Okay, all right, then we'll, we'll move forward with that. That was it from me.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Oh, I don't have, I don't think I got, I'm just looking forward to Saturday for Edmiston Day.
Are you going to provide rides from here to?
Yeah, I shuttled last time, so I can do it again this time. And, you know, Ocean City, you know, looking forward to the conference.
Because we'll have the, those, they'll be dressing the Trinidadian. Fancy dressers will be.
Yeah, yeah, because.
The rides from here to there.
You're going to be able to walk.
No.
Mayor, what time are they starting to dress? Because I'm having a briefing around 10:00 here. I can change it if I have to.
No, I don't know.
I should be out of here by 10:20 maybe? That work?
You'll be out of here at 10:20?
By, by 10:20, you give me a time, I'll be out of here, let's go that route.
Can I let you know tomorrow? Because they're supposed to meet tomorrow.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And also, I've been still, you know, continuing to walk around, and by being on the green team, I still be looking at yards to see who should be nominated for yard of the month and stuff like that. And I kicked one out the other day, I said something to Chantay to.
And I mentioned.
To give it to Mr. Barnes, and it was actually one of our residents sitting in here right now.
Thank you.
You know?
I've been working hard.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Oh, it's probably not you.
No.
She did that for her part.
Yeah, so I got one, one, one that's to be nominated. Got your garden.
I know.
But that's it for me.
Thank you. White?
And a couple of questions. One, the repair of the, of our plumbing system, what was the timeline? Because it seemed like it took a long time for it. I, I actually had no idea it wasn't done until I think I got, must have been an email from you telling us Rod was sick.
He got two emails from me.
Yeah, and the, well, one of them saying that Rod was getting better, but then I guess he had, you had, he'd already told us, but you had someone, but in that one, you included that we were still working on the plumbing issue. And that had been already probably like a few weeks. So what was, yeah, because he told us back in, when, when did it start? Anybody got an idea of when?
I'm not exactly sure, but.
I think it was a two-week timeframe.
I know, I know it's a little while.
Yeah, it just, and it just seemed to me like it was a long time, because I was thinking, oh my God, how did they go that long without using the bathroom? Yeah, it just seemed like, it was, it just seemed like it was a long time for the.
Chantay was here and Captain was here, it was about two weeks?
That's what I was trying to figure out on my calendar.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look in the emails and see.
So what's the question though?
That was my, my question was, why did it seem that it took a long time?
Why it takes so long?
Yeah, because I, I was thinking.
So what you do is, when you have an issue like that, and I explained it in the email, I believe that when we first found the issue, which was a backup in their toilet.
Does it have something to do with outside or something?
When we first found the issue.
Right.
Backup in the toilet, so they couldn't use the toilet.
Right.
They had the plumbers come in, they had WSSC come in.
Right.
They couldn't get to the backup, so they were told that they have to break the pipe, which is outside.
Okay.
Which is $8,000. When you get a quote like that, you don't go with the first plumber, you have to get other proposals.
Right.
Other proposals take time to get, you don't get that the same day.
Okay.
So you have weekends. So over the weekend and the following week, they receive proposals. That next weekend, the work was being done, so I don't think it was a very long time.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to go back and look and see how, what the timeline was, because it just seemed to me it was longer than that.
It just seemed like, it just seemed like it was.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I wasn't even here, so.
Okay.
I'm just talking about when we first, when we first talked about it.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then when they finally did the work, it just seemed like it was like a three-week span, and I said, oh, that's a long time.
It could be, yeah, when you talk about issues like that, it could be, especially when you talk about toilets.
But it didn't take them long to fix the problem.
No, it really didn't, and that was, I think that was what I was.
End of the bad weather.
They were excellent.
That was my concern, because I'm thinking, okay, that just seemed like that took a long time.
If we have a quote that is that much money, and we're talking about someone is going to dig on the outside, you cannot just go with that first proposal. I know that for sure. And you cannot pick up the phone and say, hey, Joe, give us a quote. You have to compare apples to apples.
No, I, I understand that, I don't think I could have let my house go three weeks without having any water.
Well, you could.
I'm saying.
You could if you had to.
No, they have water, they just didn't have restroom facilities.
Okay, so it was only one restroom facility?
No.
They had a boat round, we brought a porta potty in and they had access to the rec center, so they had rec.
Yeah, and their best choice was the rec center.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So they had facilities.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'll research this and see, because it just seemed like a long time to me.
Yeah.
Then the other thing was, we got to, we got to check for meals for per diem on the town policy, is that new?
It's in the personnel manual, when that was adopted, I can.
The what?
The per diem.
Because I was just wondering why we got it this year, we hadn't gotten it previous years.
And you're asking me because.
I'm just wondering.
It has something to do with.
It's in the manual.
Yeah.
Just hasn't been done before.
Okay, so, and now I'm wondering if somebody bought it, just somebody's attention and it suddenly happened, yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure somebody did.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I said something about the first time I went to MML, when I used the car and.
But I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about the, the, because we got two checks, one was for the transportation, the mileage, and one was for food.
And usually MML.
And so we know, we always get the mileage, well, I've, we've always, I've always, I always remember we got that.
I think.
But we didn't always get the food.
I think Nicole is the one that brought it to Rod's attention.
Okay, for the, for the meals, whatever it was, okay.
I think Nicole brought it to his attention.
I mean, I'm not making a plan.
I'm sure, I'm sure. And MML provides a lot of food.
Well, that was my thing, because they, you know, they feed us.
But in the email, Rod says something about.
A new policy.
Something with the meals. I, I.
Yeah, and I thought he said a new policy, so I was looking to see when it started.
And a lot of times, we try, I know in the past, I guess it was never mentioned, I mean, I've never received anything additional, but in the past, no one probably mentioned it because we try not to spend as much on council, mayor and council during MML, so that's probably why it wasn't mentioned or given before.
Okay.
So obviously someone decided that they wanted.
Back to the look.
And what we have to do is, if one gets it, all get it.
Or if, I guess, if it's in the policy.
Yes, sir.
The old personnel manual had $25 a day. That, that was approved and, as well as mileage. And then the new one came around and you all made some changes and it's much more beneficial.
Mm-hmm, it's according to.
The government standards.
But it started back in like oh-eight, oh-nine.
What'd you do?
Oh, okay.
When they wrote it before, twenty-five was put in.
That's what, uh, email is this.
So that's probably not.
Well, he sent the email to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I got the email.
Oh.
That's why I was asking, because I was like, oh, is it new? Is it something that we just, that just happened, or I, you know, you know, I get to research and stuff. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
The personnel manual final in October two thousand and seventeen.
Okay.
So it's probably because it was after MML last year.
Yeah, no one was done.
Cause I, I, I do remember seeing something about a, um, travel policy, and that was back in two thousand and sixteen, and it did mention something about, um, food and being reimbursed per diem per whatever government standards were.
That's what we went along with government.
Yeah, that was back in two thousand and sixteen, so.
Well, that was in reference to the mileage and what that was.
I know we had discussions about hotels at one point.
Put it in here with all my junk.
So, is that the question? You like it?
I am mad.
You like it?
I'm just kidding. I was like, okay. Go back to the, I, I never.
Okay.
Does that, you have something else?
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry. It was a policy resolution, twenty sixteen dash R dash oh four. Um, that was back in, it was adopted on, in June, June eighth of two thousand and sixteen. Okay, so that's the same thing, right? That's the same thing as the two thousand and seventeen thing?
That's what it says, on the per diem.
Okay, okay. So you just missed it.
You have something else?
Adopted something else, huh?
You have something else?
No, no.
Okay, so, um, again, we have Edmiston Day, um, on Saturday with our parade staging is, um, begins at ten. And, uh, Ms. Shantae can update you with everything, if you, um, for Edmiston Day.
Well, we'll, um, back up one more event before.
Oh, Friday night, Friday night.
Friday night is, um, movie in the park. Um, we will be showing Black Panther. You can show up in your favorite Marvel costume or Wakanda attire. Um, and that will start at dusk. We will provide popcorn and drinks, first come, first served. Um, I'm not sure how the grounds are, I'm gonna take a walk down there and just check it out.
It's pretty dry right there.
It's pretty dry, okay, all right, so that was one of the concerns earlier. Um, and Edmiston Day, the parade will start at Lafayette, I think it is, Captain?
Yeah.
Lafayette. Um, and will end at the Recreation Center. We will start at eleven o'clock AM, and will end over here at the rec center at noon. The festival will start at noon and will go until four. Um, I think that's it.
And if, um, we need volunteers from the council.
Yes.
Um, is everyone planning on coming? I know, Mr. Johnson, you are, cause.
Coming to what?
Edmiston.
Edmiston Day.
Oh, yeah, I'm coming, I won't be there long because I have, like, my grandson's graduation, so I guess that kind of takes precedence away at Edmiston Day.
Yeah, we'll be there. I could think, we have, since anybody else's. We have like three, two and three-year-old birthday parties. So I'm trying to figure out when.
That's okay, that's okay.
I'll be there long enough with the steppers to come through and step, and then we're done.
Are they performing?
Yes.
Okay.
When, um, when do you need, what do you need volunteers for?
So we have a list of, of items, so if, when you come, we'll, um, we'll be able to.
Delegate?
Yes, yes.
Get here early or you get the worst things.
Thank you, thank you.
Doing it. And if any of our residents would like to volunteer, I mean, please come out and, and we would greatly appreciate your assistance.
Absolutely. Ms. Shantae has worked, um, really hard on this and has gathered, um, vendors. We've pulled vendors from every possible place we could, and, um, performers that we could. Um, hoping that the weather agrees with us.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we get as many people as possible during the parade route. Um, we are going to be providing, um, discount.
A coupon.
Coupons.
A dollar off, um, just to kind of attract, um, residents to come out and support Edmiston Day. We will give, um, a dollar off to, we have two food trucks, um, one Caribbean food truck and Taco Loco, Taco Loco food truck, um, funnel cakes, Mr. Magic Ice Cream, and a pink confetti, which is like a cupcake vendor. So we have a, a lot of variety, and we would like as many residents to come out and support Edmiston Day, but, Edmiston Day would also come out and support the vendors. So we will be providing a coupon, um, so that the residents can come out and get a dollar or two off of.
Any vendor, so food or?
Or, um, any other vendors.
Right, like purchase.
If it's jewelry or what have you.
And so we'll give that out along the, um.
Parade.
Parade route, yes, so we'll have it.
Okay.
Do we like doing ice cream?
Mm-hmm, no, we won't have ice cream at all. Yes, we, we walk through the parade, or, or we do have a, um, vehicle, right?
Oh, yes, um, this older, um, gentleman, he's providing a nineteen oh-three Oldsmobile, and he would like to, um, have two dignitaries ride with him. So, anyone interested in riding with him, just let me know.
So you don't have to walk?
No, I like to walk, I would prefer to walk.
Yes, yes.
Me too, I gotta get my ten thousand steps, huh?
Yes.
All right.
I ride, the steppers would want to ride with me, so. I said, if I ride, the steppers would want to ride with me, so no, I don't think. They'll think, what's she on it for?
And we also have, um, quite a bit of candidates, and Senator Pinsky has confirmed Representative Anthony Brown.
Congress.
Congressman, I'm sorry, Congressman Anthony Brown, sorry. And, um, delegates, yeah, so we have quite a few dignitaries and candidates that have confirmed and would like to be a part of Edmiston Day, so be prepared.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much, um, Ms. Shantae, and all the work that you've done in the absence of Mr. Barnes, who is still out ill, and, um, should return by the end of this week, and all the work that you've done, um, on the, um, parade and Edmiston Day, as well as yourself. Captain, thank you for the work that you and your police department have done.
So we didn't have a, um, a code report, um, if Rod is not here.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, so these are notes from Ms. Malloy, the code officer, um, my apologies, I forgot. Um, the property on Taylor Road is being renovated by Paragon Construction Group and should be completed within four to six months. She's been sending out notices regarding the trees.
That's the house next door to Sophia?
The, the. Yes, the one on Taylor Road.
The first one, yeah.
Um, and if you pass by, you will see they are starting to take.
They're gonna try to salvage some of it?
I have no idea. Um, so, I think this says, I've been making a conscious effort to identify rental properties and have.
Yeah.
Yes.
In the backyard.
Yeah, so, um.
A lot of those.
And she's received more than half of the business fees that, um, they've sent out. And she's, um, started the inspections on the rental property, properties and businesses. And the property on Fifty Second Place, the renovations are behind. Um, as a result, she's sent out, she's requesting that they send out monthly updates with the scope of work. So I'm not sure if that's Fifty Second Avenue, this home, but she says Fifty Second Place.
Renovation.
No, I think it's.
It's a white house that's rented probably, or it's vacant.
No, there is a house on Fifty Second Place, right, that's.
Fifty Second, okay.
Yeah, they noticed they stopped.
She said the renovations are behind, but she's reporting that she's requesting them to send monthly updated, um, scope of work pro, I guess, a timeline as to what they're doing.
Well, they're gonna clean up the back, clean up the back and hauling, uh, stuff out, so they doing the grounds now, so. I think somebody just about ready to move there.
Yeah, they have a for sale sign, I mean, like a.
Yeah, but they had to do to clean up the back and get rid of a lot of those, um, logs, big logs from when they cut the tree down or whatever. So they just, they landscaping the backyard now, took a lot of stuff out. But shouldn't the code enforc, enforcement be here to give a report? I mean, the report be better off if she gave the report, instead of having somebody else.
Does she not want to come?
Giving the report.
I have no idea. So, um, a long time ago, we used to have the code enforcement officer come to the meetings, and then, um, we had the code enforcement officer not come to the meetings anymore. Um, that requires either overtime or comp time. When we need the code enforcement officers to be either out in the street or, um, here during the day. Code enforcement officer provides the report to their direct supervisor, the direct supervisor provides the report to, um, the citizens and to us.
So how can you really, how can you really get an answer if somebody else giving their report, when you have a direct question that would need to be answered by the code enforcement?
Because that, um, code enforcement officer and their supervisors should be communicating with one another, and they should be on top of it.
Okay.
Um, if, if it's what you, um, cause I can understand you, um, talking about the overtime or the comp time or whatever that is. Um, but could we make it so that once a month, cause we only meet once a month, that she could come later and maybe stay later, then we wouldn't have to worry about whether we were paying overtime or comp time or whatever. She would just stay through the meeting, right, she would stay through the meeting and leave, and we're paying her really for, what the, what does she work, eight hours? Is it eight hours? Just for those eight hours? And I, I mean, it's once a month, is, is, I guess what I'm saying. I, I do remember Randy coming.
In the schedule, in her schedule to, to be able to be here.
Randy, Randy used to come, and it wasn't a good idea when Randy came.
Yeah, he was flip flopping between here and firehouse, doing his, when he was.
I think, I think Rosio came a couple of times.
I used to come in here with these meetings, and he.
I just think it's a good idea to have her here once a month, if, if, if we have questions, if she's doing the code enforcement.
Right.
And she's the one out in the town, seeing everything that's going, and not, and not to, um, not to, um, diminish her giving it to her supervisor, but why would we have to get it secondhand if she can just give it to us? And if we had questions, we could direct them directly to her. Um, I just, cause if, if it's a matter of paying the overtime or the comp time or whatever that is, that could simply be a change in her schedule.
I, I guess I would be uncomfortable with this, only cause to me, it's equivalent of asking one of our police officers to come in and us talk to them, rather than talk to the captain.
No.
So, because they're, no, it's, it's different, right, like she's, she's, she, she reports, did she report to you or Rod?
Rod.
Rod, like she reports to Rod, and I think that really like screws up balance of authority.
It doesn't have anything to do with authority. I'm, I'm talking about simply her making a report. I'm not sure.
But then you would ask her some questions, right?
About the report.
Yeah, yeah, and I just, I feel like that, so she's not, but she doesn't.
No, because when the police, when the police gives a police report, we ask him questions if, if, if we have a question. So what's, what's wrong with asking the code enforcement person a question if you have a question that pertains to code?
So when you all decided not to do it before, did you have to have a vote on it, or how did it work?
No.
You just decided not to do it? Okay.
Well, it's an expenditure of funds, right, so they'd have to vote on it.
No. It's, I'm sorry, sir, what did you say?
It's, it would be an expenditure of funds, right?
Changing her, like, the hour or whatever.
To have her sit here for three hours.
No, it's her supervisor's decision.
Personally, I think it's a bad decision.
Okay, that's all I have. I mean, I, I accept all of your comments about that, and I appreciate them. I'm not dismissing them at all.
No, that's fine.
I'm not dismissing them.
I mean, if it's something, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I just think it's a good idea if she's here and she can answer directly to questions that we would have for her, so. I mean, I don't know if it's something, you know, that we need to vote on.
I understand what you're saying, I just don't agree.
That's fine.
I'm not dismissing them.
That's why everything, I guess, comes down to a vote, so.
Well, this is her, this is a supervisory, um, issue, so, and I think, um, Wisdom is saying that it's a no. If there's something in particular that she needs to report on, then I could see that, but for our meeting purposes, no.
Two for one, two for all.
At this time. Okay, so if there is nothing else, yes, Mr.?
Look what.
Yes, sir.
This, this, when you go up Decatur Street, soon you go across the railroad tracks, that section of Decatur Street from the railroad tracks to a stoplight, who does that belong to? Town of Beaverton or the town?
When you go up Decatur, I'm sorry.
It's Hyattsville.
Oh, that's Hyattsville.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay, you know, from railroad tracks to stoplight there, it's a whole US one.
It's what we want, it's what I want, but it's, it's actually, it's supposed to be Hyattsville, it's the state's right now, but it's Hyattsville.
Does anybody know about that big pothole?
Yes.
I ran into it and.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yesterday, when I was coming by there, a car swerved to the left instead of the right, and almost hit it in the one, cause they didn't want to hit the.
It's Hyattsville. I can let Hyattsville know. Yeah, they neglected.
At least, at least fill it.
They neglected because it's, I believe, it's state, it's that, um, easement, isn't that what, yeah. Because of the rail, the railroad track and the work that's supposed to be done, because that bridge is the state's, and I think that's a, is it an easement? Yeah, so, but I can let Hyattsville know. Thank you. Everybody thinks that's us, though, and that's why they may as well give that to us.
Years and years ago, when we had rain and had to take boats down through there, we used to be honest.
Maybe we need to put up a sign that says on Decatur Street, as you, right, like you are now exiting Edmiston.
Exactly, I think so, I think so.
Thought that last.
Right there.
There's a, I thought that there used to be a welcome to Edmiston sign, that's.
Well, that's, that's coming, right, but I'm talking about.
When you leave it.
We need to put it right at that open.
When you go from what is like our Decatur Street to no man's land Decatur Street.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I move, we'll adjourn the meeting.
I see.
All right.
Bye.